Okay, so it's 6:30, so let's open the June 20th, no, July 12th meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. And I guess this is being recorded for broadcast on local cable TV. So first thing they have is minutes from June 28th.
Make a motion to move the minutes of June 28th?
Move the discussion?
It looked like there was a typo under proposed zoning bylaws. One, two, three, four, five, six. Down at the last end of the sentence, it says a half a parcel.
Oh, it should be half an acre. And it's, oh God. I guess this is mega, I've never seen it put like that before. Always seen it as MW. Well, that's true.
This is good for the rest of us who don't know the...
Anything else, all else?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, quick. So, that brings us to an A and R on the Rutland side of Welch. Which I believe Julian is probably here.
Yep. You see, you answered your question, I think.
I did, I forward to the board.
We're not creating any lots, we're just swapping some parcels to Bessie's own. At Bonnie and Kyle's house. So, here's Emerald Road, here's Welch. And this is the actual driveway that goes to their house. And right now, their house owns here...
Excuse me, could I just ask?
Yep.
I just want to get to the plan that you're referring to up on the screen so the board can see what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Would that be the revised A and R that shows the driveway?
Yeah, we added some details and so many questions.
This one here?
Uh, that one, right there.
Yeah.
Alright, so, this is the nursery, Rutland Nursery building. Well, that Colin Bonnie's own this, like this, like this, like this, like this, like this. Around like this, like this, and like that. And they also own a giant piece of property here, like seventeen acres down in here.
It's all wet, yeah.
They're selling their home, and they wanted to take this piece of land, because all you need is an acre and a half. They got, they're leaving seven point five, six acres, and they're gonna add it to their other large piece that they have here. And so we created parcel three B to go to this book and page, become part of this one. And that's pretty much what we're doing, we've gotten that piece off.
Why didn't they do and get rid of that line between the nursery property and that one, yeah?
This one?
Yeah.
Because this is owned by Rutland Nurseries, and this is owned by Bessie's. Bessie's do not, I don't believe, fully own the nursery anymore.
Oh, okay, understood. So, that's fine. I just, I didn't make any sense to me.
But they do own this. So, not to say that...
Would you eliminate this line then, if they're gonna move both?
Eventually, but you can't do that until the next step.
The next step.
We gotta create this plan, because we changed the line. Now this will go into this deed, and then if they do an 81X plan, they just show their whole parcel.
Did you say they were selling their house?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they tried to get one of my buddies to buy it, and he said...
Yeah, I don't know where they're moving, but it's, I think they have somebody interested in it. Actually, they do have somebody interested in it.
Yeah, they've been showing it for a while.
And this is the outcome of what they want to do.
So...
Now, what, that little corner piece up there?
This here?
Yeah.
That's just the way this shape has always been.
That's not changing at all?
No.
That's what I thought.
So, that parcel was originally part of...
Originally, this was all a giant piece, and then over the years, this is what's transpired.
So, oh, what am I calling that? Uh, I don't have the lot number. The nursery right now is...
Is on Emerald Road LLC.
Yes.
Yep.
So... I guess I don't.
This is kind of a crazy situation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the way it is. Obviously, when Welch Ave came in, they didn't follow any specifics, but there's a little sliver of land here that's all frontage. But it's owned by a different person.
Yeah, it just doesn't have any acreage, so it can't...
Duncan Williams is growing. Question I have, Julian.
Yep.
On the board of assessors, they do not have this 22. You're the only one that has that in there.
Well, this is a...
It does show... On the thing, that's the footage, so...
That's there, because we actually surveyed this probably three years ago. Mr. Spillini there, the bank's attorney, because they were financing stuff and all that. So we had to do a full fledged survey of all this, this side of the land. And assessors is a guide, this is reality.
Did the ass... but doesn't the ass... Hold on a second, let me ask this question so it'll make sense. When you guys do a survey, there's the option to record it, correct? They can record it?
Yeah, if we do a Form A, we have to record it for it to be valid. If somebody calls me up and says, "Oh, can you, I just want to know where my land is, put it on a piece of paper, because I bought ten different parcels." The deed says parcel one, parcel A, parcel C, what's it look like? So what we do is an 81X plan, which is a plan of the deed, not necessarily field surveyed, but put all the documents together.
So I did a Form A, because I wanted my...
Form A is actual...
And I gotta record with the Worcester Registry deed, because I had a question on where my frontage was. And I wanted to reassure that that was my frontage, so that's what the surveyor did, and it got recorded, so... Okay, that was my curiosity. So, if you did an 81X on this way back, what was the bank, did they do a Form A or an 81X?
It was 81X, it was just all their lands at the...
So that's why I dig, the assessors probably got nothing.
Looking for the title.
Because when I did the Form A, the assessor got a copy of that from the Worcester Registry of Deeds in Rutland. Even though it matched everything, it was just, there was a new date associated with it.
That's why that's...
Okay.
They're getting closer and closer to being exact, but sometimes they're not even in the right neighborhood.
Are they planning, and again, I'm asking maybe something, Julian, are they leaving, when they're selling this house, they're not planning on using Welch Road as the access to that house?
I don't see why they would, because driveway is a paved driveway right up there.
Okay.
I don't know.
I mean, that's...
If they do, they gotta go get a driveway from it.
Alright, and that's with the director, okay, it's out of our...
So...
And that's listed as a parcel, so it's not considered a lot.
Right, it's not a lot. Parceling in this map plan, it says what it's doing. So it's not like they can come over and...
Well, I did not know that, that you had to go through a step to, you know, in order to combine lots and things like that.
Oh yeah, anytime there's a change on a, if we change this one little line, a hundredth of a foot has to come before you guys.
Yeah. So basically, you're adding this line here.
We're adding this line. Yep, from here to here, this is what these people are buying, that's going to the rest of the Bessie land.
And then you're creating an easement, because that's the question eight that I was looking at.
Well, that, just to save them, we created an easement that gives this little parking lot here...
Yep.
That they've been using for years and years and years, so they can still use that on that property. They have rights to do that. So if you didn't do this, soon as they sell us, these people can come in here and say, "Don't park here." But now there's a, an easement created that will be in a deed that says, that's totally legit.
And that's being by the easement down on Welch?
Or is that... That's this one.
Okay.
Created on this piece of land for this purpose. And then here, this, they have...
Oh, I see it now.
There's some plants and stuff that are over in here.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't see that.
So they're, they're giving them rights to be able to pass or repass to use that.
What's that dotted line that's coming up across the driveway?
The line coming across the driveway?
Is that right there?
That's easement.
Okay.
That gives these, these people...
So that's cutting out that little quadro-whatever thing as an easement area?
That's a little parking, gravel parking area.
So does that make it a common driveway then? Because it's going to, I guess I gotta ask that question. I gotta ask the question, because it's going to Bessie's and to a house, right? Going to the LLC? So do we need to have a common driveway, Dave, Norm, Board?
Prior to.
Yes, prior to.
Way of the day coming to Rutland. Fifties? Well, Bonnie's been here forever.
Yes.
But you're redoing the lot, so...
No, actually, we're not touching this part of the lot. We're only cutting this chunk off, that's been...
Alright, I'm just making sure.
Is that a house on that, on the easement?
No, it's a parking lot.
Oh, that's the lot?
It's a parking lot.
Oh, God.
Thank you for the update, now...
So, after we have the thing...
Let me just finish reading Dave's comments that Julian sent back. These came just like a couple hours ago, and I hadn't got through them. I got through like five, as far as I got, so I didn't get the second page, I just wanted to make sure.
Story of my life. Fifty minutes before meeting, yeah. Oh, well. So it keeps me young, I guess.
Or at least under stress, one would get.
Alright. Dave, did you have any, I guess, before Norm asked, did you have any comments to the comments that came back?
I asked the questions that I thought were maybe helpful for the board in this matter, given the complexity of this. Do you have any answers back? Certainly, the board has handled enough A and Rs in its time, if you have the information there, I don't have anything else to add here. Tip for one thing, what's the connection between this land division and the part that is now or formerly Emerald Road LLC? With just the deed book reference? Is that up above showing the structure?
Yeah, that's the nursery itself. I believe Bessie's don't, Bonnie and Kyle sold that. Or put it into an LLC, so it's a different entity.
Okay.
I believe.
So, but parcel three B has commercial activity on it. Parcel three B will have commercial activity after this is done. The land now or formerly has commercial activity on it, by the same owner or by different owners?
I guess I'm confused if it...
Your kids took over? I think so, you and Brent took it.
Yeah.
So it's still in the family, so...
Is the easement that's being created from the residential piece of property, is that commercial or residential?
Uh, that's a good question.
Well, it's all residential.
I think, yeah, I think it's all residential in that business was...
It's a non-conforming use.
Like all the other businesses in Rutland, except for Cleese.
But I guess the question is, isn't parcel three B being merged by ownership with now or formerly Emerald Road LLC to maintain the land that's currently being used for commercial, that will be continued to be used for commercial after this land lot split?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, but...
Is that the case or not?
No. This parcel is gonna go to Bonnie Bess...
But this person, this easement, this whole piece has stuff on it, that's giving these people rights to use this.
Yeah, that's my confusion, is that it's part of what's being used now.
It's being used now.
Being used now by somebody who doesn't own the property.
Same as it would be later. Two different people are using it, but there's rights to pass or repass to use it.
Okay.
By putting that there.
I'm okay with this, I'm just, to Dave's point, it's, is that that new easement becoming a complete, commercial piece of property? Or is it still retaining its residential status?
I call it amber culture.
It's still the culture.
It's still...
What's happening today is gonna happen here tomorrow.
This doesn't change any zoning at all whatsoever, you can't do that.
Nothing's changing, other than the slot line.
It's all residential. Even this is residential.
Well, I think the question is whether the commercial area will be maintained in the same area that's currently being in, whether it will be expanded or not.
Yeah.
It's not expanding, because it's already there.
Oh, so they're just cutting off the commercial area from the residential property, is what, the way I view this. Somebody else?
I don't know, I agree with Norm that it's residential is residential, and just the use of...
It's a commercial activity. Let's put it that way. But it's not commercial land.
And the major home occupancy's been brought to us when?
Two hundred years ago.
This is prior to any of that.
Seventeen seventy-six.
Yeah.
I don't even want to know anymore. This is the problem I have with this town.
She chased the king out of here, this was the first piece.
Yeah. They don't, they don't view that in Worcester the same way as they do somewhere in Rutland.
Thank God.
No, actually, yeah, anyhow, okay, I'm fine.
Worcester will not allow a cow in Worcester.
I'm okay with that.
Get them the heck out, if they can't...
Or a chicken, or a pigeon. That's why my father moved to Rutland, they wouldn't let him have pigeons. So he moved to Rutland. I did that.
Can't have chickens, get out of the grapefruit valley.
Ah, I hear you. He had lots of problems with them, with his pigeons, and his pigeons were taken care of better than most kids.
And I'm okay with that. The problem is, is that I think everybody in Worcester thinks you can move to Rutland and have a large business and get away with it. That you don't have the oversight that you have in Worcester. Therein lies my problem.
Well, I like to see a business in Rutland.
Okay. Move on, it's outsiders, we're trying to keep calm.
Okay, back to it, and do we have a motion to endorse?
I'll make a motion to endorse the, what do you call it, no, I'm lost.
A and R.
The what?
A and R.
A and R, thank you.
Tim? Second?
Is there any discussion? My only question is the fee.
We've not received a fee, yes.
You have it, you have it.
I'm not.
Ah, I guess it's hostage.
So, you're definitely changing one lot?
Yeah.
And adding parcel.
And adding a parcel, however, our language for the fees does not include the word parcel, I believe.
I guess I use it more often.
But now we're entering law number two, an existing law, by...
Yeah, you're doing, you'd...
Yeah, on this one, you're only...
Okay.
I say it's two.
So changing one and creating one?
Yep.
So it's two.
Three thousand dollars.
It doesn't matter.
It'll go into the price of the house, right?
Four hundred, you have a check on you?
I don't, she was, Bonnie was gonna be here, so I just, you guys sign it, then check it out, and she gives you a check.
I think they're good for it.
Yeah, I think they're good for it.
I'm borderline in discussion with Bonnie about a piece of property, so therefore, I feel that maybe I should recuse myself.
Have you signed anything?
This part, isn't this legal?
I have not.
Yeah, you haven't signed anything. It's like me talking to Clea, I want to buy half of Rutland. As long as I don't do it. As long as you haven't signed anything, you don't, if you haven't entered into a contract, I don't see it as a problem.
Not really.
Alright.
Alright.
Go for it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me see, it's facing your way, so...
What's the fee end up being, so I can tell her?
That's why I don't have my...
How much?
Four hundred.
Four hundred? Yeah, go ahead.
It's three hundred plus fifteen, fifty, Norm?
Yep.
Yeah, we got it.
I'll tell her that.
Check number or...
Don't have it.
To be announced.
Blank.
Bing bing, just need a credit card. Check's in here, pass, here we go.
End of that. Wow.
Don't say it, I'm thinking, look at the clock, and I'm thinking...
I know.
You want to get out of here? That won't be long.
It's simple, approve, approve, approve. We're out.
Open it.
Oh.
I'm out of the check, eventually we'll be four hundred.
I haven't seen a D-sized drawing in a long time.
I've seen it on my...
I have not seen it.
Actually doubled, our roll used to be like a hundred and eighty. Ninety-five dollars, now it's double, tripled, it's six hundred dollars.
Did you get them from down, where's that place downtown? In Worcester, the old, they still sell them at Northworks?
It's one gate, that was just one gate.
Okay. Yeah. What, what do I do?
Do you want to hold this until the check comes, or...
I think it'd be a good idea. If she, I mean... That's the procedure, we're supposed to have check and Form A, and we don't have all, so I just... You text her, Julian, tell her, drop the check off tomorrow to Dave.
Actually, we wouldn't accept the check tonight, she'd have to drop it after a business hours.
Yeah, you just make a copy of it with your signatures, but it's alright.
So we hold this?
Do we have the copies that we need?
We do.
Alright, so, say you give it to Dave...
I want her to hold it, ransom.
I guess I can't.
No, I'm gonna get screwed too. Good, now I have a real box. Thank you. Give me Clay, I got him warmed up.
Hey, let's get George in here. George sold all of his storage facilities.
Oh, yeah.
I was just like, I was gonna give him a hard time. Hey, who's running these now?
Who's losing? They sold all, really?
All of them, yeah.
The Main Street properties, you're saying, too?
Yeah, I saw that seven point two million, I'm going, yep, time to hit George's house tonight. Hopefully he's carrying cash. Three point six each.
Okay, basically...
Good for him, huh?
Next on our agenda is all of the subdivisions, which we have asked Mr. Blair to come in to give us an update on what is or isn't happening.
Okay, where do you want to start?
I don't know, well, number three says Bryce Lemon Estates.
Okay, so, we're just about finished with the sidewalks, and the top half they're finished, the bottom half, we have...
Phase three.
Phase three. Well, phase two and phase one are...
Yeah.
Let me ask about that, Clea, what's the plan for the fall town meeting?
So I'm gonna submit again for those two.
Okay.
And I'm gonna send a letter to the residents down there. You know, because I think people have the impression that if the town doesn't do it, that I have to do it. It really isn't the case. I think the people, that's the way it went over, I wasn't at the meeting, so I, but that's the feeling I got from, you know, what I, what I saw, and then... So, I just think that they have to understand that I'm done, I mean, I'm done. What do I have to do, there's no, there's no line item for plowing. I have to plow a sand during construction, but do I have to plow a sand forever? No. What's gonna happen is, they're gonna call me, and I'm gonna say, "Call it down." So, it's probably a good idea to let them know that they should come to the meeting and stand up for themselves. I mean, it's all done, my part's done.
No, 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 I agree with you. My point is, I just want to make sure that you and anybody else from Blair Construction is there to make sure that if questions come up, you, because last time, I literally was thinking something, I didn't say it fast enough, and they're voting. And I was just like...
Same here.
I was just like...
And I just got up and rambled, so...
No, no, point is just, there were people making points that weren't accurate.
More relevant.
The other thing, they're gonna save the town some money by not accepting it.
Yeah, and I was just like, no, you're not! And their taxes will be less, no, it won't! And I just, I was more in this zone, like, this is, this is like fake news.
They need to be educated.
Yeah, and, but then they're voting, and I'm going like, damn, probably should've got up and rambled a little, did a little, did a little, um... Who's my favorite Republican that's passed away?
Trump. Oh, not Trump.
Cook, across from, Eddie Bracebridge. I should've went Eddie on him. Guys, don't know what you're talking about, you're still paying taxes! I think you're getting a free ride here, so...
Louis could've given it.
I was gonna say, if Louis...
He was flying though, he was in the air.
He was in the air.
I just want to make sure that this gets done and over with in the, in the fall town meeting. Because it needs to get on Director Buckley's itinerary to get done.
Well, phase one is, really, he's been doing it for years.
Yeah, but it didn't get officially signed off and done correctly, that was a mistake on the town's part, I get that.
Correct.
I mean, I submitted it, all of the stuff.
You did everything, you just didn't, it didn't get signed off and put to the right place. That can get fixed, but phase two, I didn't understand that. So...
So, what about upcoming phases?
So, we're, we're just about, the guy that's doing Britnall is starting probably tomorrow to get that continued. He's got about a month worth of work, he's just gonna lay a little bit of pipe, and then I, you know, we're gonna finish that other crossing and gravel it and pave it. So probably, I say by the end of August, Britnall's finished, you know, the pavement's down on Britnall.
So you solved all of the sewer water coverage and all that stuff?
Oh, yeah. Yep, but as far as, so when he, when he finishes there, he's going to phase one C, which is Lemon Circle, at Bryce. But there's such an excess of fill on one C, and there's such a deficit of fill on four, that we're gonna do, we're gonna move the fill from one C to four at the same time. So what has to happen is, we have to build that Rutland Crossing at, at phase four, which is right at the end of phase two.
Yeah.
So we can't go any further with that road, we can't get the stuff across. I mean, it's all approved by the DCR and everybody, so I just gotta, I think this is the best time of year to put it in anyway, it's dry, it's done, I don't have to worry about it.
So, when your contractor's done, say the end of July, first part of August, he's gonna switch over to Bryce Lemon and try to do the push-through between phase two and phase three?
No, there's phase two is phase four, phase three's done.
That's like, between two and three, is four the...
Four's the next phase, and it's right next to two. It goes one, two, three, four, and then the cul-de-sac's a five.
Yeah, so phase four is actually the connection between two and three?
Yes.
That's what I want to get at.
So that's, yeah...
That's the next step he's gonna do in a month or so, or start on in a month?
He's gonna start on one C, and in order to start on one C, we have to do phase four in conjunction.
Okay.
So we're gonna go together.
Okay.
That's gonna be a lot of traffic over the phase two.
For a while.
Yep. Lot of heavy traffic.
But I'm glad that it's, you're getting it connected.
Connected is the key.
And to me, that is, that's my main thing for wanting to know how soon you're gonna be able to do that.
And I'll ask the...
Because if, if, it goes to hell with, you know, the housing part of it, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that at least opened.
Yeah, oh no, I'm gonna get that. Probably, we'll probably be paving that next spring.
Yeah.
What?
Phase four, one C and four.
Is, and I'm asking for a typical timeline, phase three, uh, spring town meeting?
I got my fingers crossed that I might be ready, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna start planting trees. I might be ready for fall, but, I'm not gonna do it unless I'm sixty days, everything's paved, everything's in, you know, because it just isn't worth the, the, the stress.
You're already stretching.
So I just plow phase three and then, and then we.
Just curious, I'm not saying you have to.
I know, but I'm, it's definitely spring. And you know, just to come back on that meeting, whenever the Finance Committee and the Planning Board both recommend.
Yeah.
I've never seen any time a road get turned down, I mean, I didn't, you know.
I asked these two, in your history here, has that road ever been negated, and I got, mm.
I had one time, Tommy Rochella had it, the problem was a fire hydrant.
Yeah, well, I remember that fight with your dad many years ago, I mean, that's a decade and a half ago.
Right, but that was the only time that, when you, when we bring a road in, that, that it got turned down, but it was for a different reason.
And it was a cul-de-sac too, it wasn't even a, a complete road through, it was just a.
It was a whole site.
Yeah, it was a whole site, that was rolling bridge.
No, Sun Tree Estates.
Yeah. That was a one fire hydrant that was listed on the plan, and then you put in, and.
We thought Kyle said you didn't have to and now.
Yeah.
But anyway, so, um, you know, phase three definitely into the spring.
Okay.
So, okay, so that's Britnall, take, uh, it's gonna be starting up Bear Hill Two. Saw you, they were moving some dirt around up there, but that's all I've seen.
I just got my first building permit.
Yeah.
It had been sitting for a while, but for some reason the assessors hadn't signed off. I had to talk to Dave to figure out, not this Dave, David Crane, to figure out what was going on, and he finally, but we've got every house up there is, right now, sold, and I gotta build them.
Careful, that, you gotta get the road done on Britnall.
Right, well, that's like by the end of August. That won't be a problem.
So you think. You'll have Britnall done for a Fall Town meeting approval?
No.
Just a base coat.
Base coat.
Okay.
But it's, it'll, the connection will be done so that it won't hold up occupancy permits on.
Okay.
So that brings me to the temporary egress.
He steals my thunder all the time.
Which, uh, obviously that, wh- once the connection's made out to Britnall, that is supposed to be abandoned.
Correct.
The question is how quickly?
What I wanna do is I need to run the sewer and water up from, for Hilltop Estates, across from you there. And, um, once I do that, then I can just loam it, seed it, done.
And it, then it becomes an easement, correct?
Yes, there's already, there's already electrical down there.
Yeah, three phase actually, for the pump station.
You know, today's technology, I wouldn't need to, to do that, but I didn't in Bryce, oh, two phase.
You know, and, I don't know, it's just that, that egress has been there for so long now at this point, and, uh.
Are you saying that maybe it oughta be some kind of blockage to keep people from turning?
I was thinking that.
Yeah, you know, once the, the regular egress is, is built on Britnall Estates, a couple of rocks across it or something.
Is there a stone wall there?
There was a stone wall at Britnall, and part of the restoration is you're required to put the stone wall back.
Well, that'll block it off right there.
Yeah, but not from the people in Bear Hill driving up to the stone wall.
Question of time.
No problem.
And, I, I'm not, I'm not saying it needs to be done in a hurry necessarily. But, you know, i- if Hilltop is, is two years away for you, you're probably not really gonna wanna put that water and sewer up there right away.
I'm thinking if I can get the crew, well, he's got, this guy that I work with has a lot of guys, a lot of crews, a lot of machines. If I can get Joe to look at it and say it's okay, I'll just run it out that easement and put it up the side of Britnall Drive while he's still there. I could do it now.
Yeah.
You know, if Joe says it's okay, I could do it now.
I think, I think that would be ideal, because then it definitely could be totally blocked off.
Yep, then it'll be done. And I can temporarily block it off anyway.
Yeah, but, you know.
Don't hook up, don't hook up. Yeah, you, stick with your well and sewer, well and septic, yeah.
I put too much work into my septic, I tell you, too much money. I've got a septic that's big enough for a hotel.
You had a great perk rate, huh?
Yeah, I've got five one hundred foot trenches.
Holy shit, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Who designed that one, was that Ebert?
Jim Calix, wasn't it?
Who designed that one?
Uh, God, guy from out in, uh, was he Hubbardston?
Hey, you got me thinking, I gotta go talk to Jimmy and see who did his from my house.
I cannot, I can't, I can't think of his name.
I found nobody is, Everett Ebert had, they were all hundred foot, Jim Calix septic was designed by Everett Ebert, and there was like four hundred foot trenches, I'm like, where'd these things go? That's a long distance.
I had, I had, I had to fight that one to hell to see even get it.
Fifty years old, they're still working perfect.
As a matter of fact, I get totally bullshit, because your father built the house right across the street from me, and he put in this little dinky.
Was it Landigan?
Roger Landigan maybe.
Was it Roger Landigan?
Yeah, my father used to use it, my daddy.
You're gonna begin with an E, but, Jesus, I'm talking thirty-five years ago, come on.
So to answer your question, I'll try to get that, if I can, I'll talk to Franny, I was gonna talk to him anyway. You know, just get that done, 'cause once that's done, and if, if long as everything's okay with Hilltop, I mean, that's really all I gotta do.
Which I guess brings up Hilltop, where are we with Hilltop?
I am, hopefully haven't.
Working on it.
We, we've been working on so many different things, and I had to put Hilltop on a little pause because I had this big problem holder that I finally fixed, hopefully, and, um, we should hopefully have a thing in maybe early next week, right?
See, I'm just, I'm not. I, I'm in a real quandary on, on that one, because Town Council said that they didn't really think it was a subdivision, right?
Yes.
Not under the configuration that was submitted to the board.
That, that's what we're changing, so what we're doing is, just, I'll fill you in maybe, hopefully, but. We're, we're taking that, where the easement was lot six, so it was the frontage for lot six and the driveway for lot six, so we put it over that and still called it an easement. What we're doing is, we're gonna make that a right-of-way, go onto lot six with the cul, the bulb with the cul-de-sac, give the frontage from the bulb with the cul-de-sac to that lot. And then make it a right-of-way, and the other lots still gonna have that can't be subdivided. And that one will say can't be subdivided, and it's ten acres, so it's still gonna be an estate lot. But, that'll get its frontage there, all the other ones keep its front, their frontage where it is, and it becomes a right-of-way and it becomes a subdivision. That was Julian and I putting our heads together.
What was told to us?
Yeah, yeah, George agreed with your Town Council, by the way, so.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't have fire to go, I didn't have, I didn't have a go on it, he says, it's not a subdivision, it's an easement, okay.
Okay.
And then, Clay, I, just to be transparent, I brought up the rescission process for Noble Hill. I want that subdivision gone, it's just, there's no more special permit, definitive plan's been out there sixteen years, I think it's time to rescind it. Wanna start over, I don't care, but leaving it on the books, I think's wrong.
I don't think you can.
Yeah.
There was a.
Well, I got questions to our attorney, we gotta ask KP about that, so, I don't wanna get into, I'm not an attorney, so.
The zoning's froze on it until twenty twenty-five, you can't.
Zoning's frozen, huh?
Yeah, because it was under a moratorium.
Yeah, but that was.
That was what, twenty sixteen, big deal, you know?
No, that was, that was.
I couldn't do anything with that site until twenty sixteen, and then they put another moratorium on till twenty eighteen. How the hell am I gonna do anything?
Moratorium for what?
Still water. When you, when you're under a moratorium, everything changes, plus, during the Great Recession, they added four years to every permit.
Yeah, but that's all gone.
Yep, it's gone, but it's still, you're still gaining.
How can you have a moratorium without a special permit? You can't even build a thing.
I have a special permit.
No you don't.
Yes, I.
It's gone.
If I do any work at all.
Okay.
It maintains.
I'll let KP do that, I'm not getting, I'm not, a- any work at all is, is infrastructure, not logging.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Even if I did engineering work, I've been through this, Tim, trust me.
Alright, well, I'm gonna have KP, 'cause, um.
Why are you gonna waste your money on?
Because, George has said multiple times, as long as there's a mortgage on it, um, you can't, you can't do anything, no, that's wrong.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I read Mass General Law, I read it instead of, um.
Where'd you get your law degree?
I didn't get one, I read it and I'm asking the question to KP Law to ask, to see if I'm wrong.
Little advice, don't waste your money, here's number one, if there's a mortgage on it, you can't rescind it.
Not true.
Oh, yeah? Ask the town of Holden, 'cause they tried to rescind my Greenwood last year, and you know what their lawyer told them? Don't bother, when there's a mortgage on it, you can't. Plus, it was under a moratorium till twenty eighteen, how the hell am I gonna get it built before then? Trust me, you lose, and you're gonna waste all that money for a while.
Well, I'll let KP tell me that.
Why, you're gonna ask him for advice?
Yeah, because I read Mass General Law and it said, you can have, uh, a mortgage under Blair for all the properties, and that doesn't constitute a, uh, non-recision, has to be individuals on the property.
It is, what do you think? I got a blanket mortgage on everything? No, it's individual.
Yeah.
It's a different bank.
We'll, we'll get clarification.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Why waste your, I want your money? Why do you wanna rescind it? Yeah, because where am I going? Where's it going?
I thought somebody made an offer on, on the whole property and was gonna build one house on it.
Would that be nice? I'll sell it.
Name was Blair. Fifty-two million dollars. The nicest view in the entire town of Rutherford.
It is.
Almost a three hundred and sixty degree view up the hill.
But what does it gain?
We're not, we're not gonna waste a lot of money, believe me.
Yeah.
It doesn't gain anything either, I mean, I'd be standing in front of you with the same subdivision plan two days after. What are you gonna do? Say no? If it meets the rules and regs, it gets approved.
The rules and regs are different than sixteen years, sixteen years ago? We didn't make any changes in the last sixteen years. Yeah, exactly.
So you want me to put bounds in it, I mean, that doesn't change much, Tim. I was telling you, wasting a lot of time and effort, it was under a moratorium till twenty eighteen.
What happened in sixteen years with the, with the, uh, um, uh, I'm having a, uh, Peters Group, Conservation Commission, all that stuff?
Who's Peters Group?
Conservation Commission, in sixteen years, there's been no water changes? What's that?
Those are, ConCon's only good three years at a time, so that doesn't play into anything.
So that has, that's not even approved anymore on the property then?
No, we gotta, we gotta work on that, that part, but that's.
So here's, here's my, just what happened there, let, let me just finish this statement. So, I had Bryce Estates, and we were gonna build Bryce Estates, and then I was gonna build Noble Hill. Well, I couldn't build Bryce Estates because they put a sewer moratorium on. The minute they lifted the sewer moratorium, the minute I applied for a sewer extension permit, right?
Yep.
Okay, now I'm building Bryce Estates, at the same time, I can't build across the street. It's, I mean, would you want me to? 'Cause it, it would be crazy for me to throw, I could throw a couple hundred houses in, what would that do to the town? It's crazy, do it in phases, do it the right way, but you go to rescind stuff and you put moratoriums on and building permit caps and all that other shit, you gotta build shit faster, and it, and it's, it's just crazy, it's crazy.
It's not that I, it's not that.
It's a fight that the town can't win.
Yeah, it's not that I don't want houses in Rutherford, don't get me wrong, I'm fine with that.
I know that, but.
It's the fact that I don't want this, a, a design sitting on the books for sixteen years, that just is crazy.
Then don't put moratoriums on, till twenty eighteen.
I don't have any control of that.
Well, what the hell you want me to do? I can't build it if it's under a moratorium.
You could've built it back in, when you, when you went and got the permit.
I'm sure you couldn't.
No, there was already a moratorium.
Not in twenty oh six, twenty oh seven?
Go read the paperwork, I gave it all to the town, it's, it's this thick.
It was a moratorium back then?
Yeah, two thousand and six, of course. There was a sewer moratorium, that's why I didn't build Bryce Estates then, that was approved back then, two thousand and six, I couldn't build it, because they put that.
How the hell did all these A and Rs go up in between then?
Where?
Through the entire town.
Sewer and water?
In ten years, we went from six thousand people to nine thousand, so.
Not the connections.
Alright, well.
I'm just telling you, it's a waste of time and money, and there's, and there's a mortgage on it, it can't be rescinded, tar, any lawyer will tell you that. Anyway, if they tell you something different, they wanna take legal fees from you. I'm telling you, I've been through it.
I just wanted to be transparent that I asked a question, so I'm not backdooring you or anything.
I bust your ass, I tell you, I probably don't bust your ass, it doesn't matter, I mean, I, I appreciate your transparency, but I'm just telling you, it's a waste of the town's money and it's a waste of time. You lose, number one, 'cause there's a mortgage on it, number two, it was under a moratorium till twenty eighteen, think about that.
It'll be a waste of your money.
It would be a waste of my money.
No, 'cause we'll be paying for it out of.
Yeah. Most of my taxes.
Look in, I just, I, I didn't go with an extensive list to KP, I just asked him, well, I sent it to Dave and Norm, just wanna ask some questions. 'Cause we've never done it before, and I don't think this, I don't think this board's ever rescinded anything, have they?
No.
Not in my, not in my tour duty.
What?
Maybe under Tommy Doof.
Shaanick Hill Estates.
That was ours, we built it.
No, the one that went up on the hill?
Yeah.
That the DCR took? DCR took it, that's right.
Yeah, and.
I don't think that got approved.
That's, okay, we didn't rescind it, we did not approve it.
Denied it.
Yep.
Well, part of the question was, KP, tell us the process to do this, 'cause I don't think we have a process.
That's it, we're, at this point, I hate to use the word, but I'll use it, I think we're all ignorant of the process.
Yeah, exactly.
And the rules, so, let's learn.
Yeah.
It's really simple, you hold a public hearing and you vote, I mean, that's, that's the process, you just have to do it through a public hearing. If there's a mortgage, it can't be rescinded, period, period, dot, you'll find that out. And if, and if, and if they tell you something different, let me see it before you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, number one, number two, it was, think about this, it was under a moratorium until four years ago, five, four years ago. Four years ago, it was under a moratorium, a whole while it was approved.
I'm fine with that.
And, yeah, I, I, I guess the only other thing that, at least from my part, we were not starting a rescission proceeding without talking with you.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I wanted to tell you, I'm just asking questions right now. 'Cause I wanna, I wanna get educated, 'cause I've, like you said, I don't have a law degree, I just read the stuff. But the last time I did this, I helped, um, our town administrator make KP actually understand the law, so. I guess we engineers aren't as stupid as we look, so.
Then you put a building permit cap, and you can only get three building permits a month.
Well, that doesn't count for Noble Hill, Bryce, or any A and Rs.
Or, well, it does for A and Rs.
I thought the judge overruled that.
The judge gave us that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, um.
And senior housing.
But Britnall, Bear Hill Two, Noble, Bryce.
Or all.
You know why? 'Cause they were under a moratorium. And there's a mortgage on them.
So my councilor is, that's history, that's not, was never approved because of, had a bridge and all that, are you gonna do anything on Pleasant Hill?
They're logging it, someone drove by that thing.
Yeah, it's coming back, but the problem is, I mean, again, you, when you, when you get it approved, now you're paying juice on lots, real estate taxes. Even if I don't own anything on the property, I'm paying real estate taxes on individual lots, and there's a hundred of them there, right?
As opposed to one big lot?
One big lot, even that's high, but it, it's, it's nothing, you know, and the same thing with Milliken Brook, that's why I haven't come back in and brought that in, because I gotta finish these other ones first. And the next place I'm going is Noble.
That's another sewer pump station too, isn't it?
One more. Yeah.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be a tough one with Mr. Buckley.
I was gonna say, yeah, just send it down the hill.
It's a long pond. We could hit the Weir River, man, there's that river right there.
I don't know, isn't there a sand pit down there, that might make it nice, what about a water treatment center right down there?
Really?
Well, you know, we could do it all in E ones, but it's, I think it's cheaper to do a pump station.
Yeah, when there's a hundred of them, it is. Yeah.
I think Joe might have something to say about that.
Well, they're all private, he shouldn't, he wouldn't say too much.
As long as the lines outside the houses are his, he probably won't, wouldn't.
They're not his, none of the lines, even if they're in the street, they don't have to be.
No, 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 I meant, I meant if, if the, the E ones are coming into a main sewer trunk line, that would be his and he would, uh.
No, not even that's his, doesn't have to be. E ones, everything to do with an E one, including the line, 'cause I just, we just did it over here on Britnall, you know, Bear Hill Two.
You could talk to him about that one and see what he come back with.
Everything including the line is a responsibility of.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a D to the.
Including the main trunk line.
Yeah, 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 all the way up until you get up to the, um, pumping station, that's all there is. That's all there is.
It's gravity.
Gravity.
That goes to gravity, which goes to the pump station and miles, all miles, all the way down miles away.
But until it gets to the gravity, it's all part of the deeds of the homeowners, including the ones that Jimmy built across the street.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I sit back and go, man, you suckers. That's gonna be expensive if something goes wrong.
But then nothing really does. I mean, it's just a high pressure. They say it's low pressure, but I, it's a high pressure. I'd be, people have tapped into my main that goes up the street from Bryce Estates with the E1.
Oh, really?
Can you imagine?
Wow.
And it pushes it all the way down Maple Ave from way the hell down here. Those things are powerful. Jimmy was gonna do his, uh, uh, the other part. He was gonna tie into my trunk line that I put in, and it was gonna push it to the...
Oh, for a senior housing?
For a senior housing, but he ended up, Joe, ended up making the right move and had him tie into the gravity, which was smart.
Yeah. All right.
Anyway, so, don't waste your time, don't waste your money.
All right.
Yeah, good discussion.
Yeah, it's all good. All right, you guys cool with me?
Yeah, I think we covered.
Oh, just on that second, um, crossing, just get the paperwork to us from your engineer.
It's all done, yeah.
Okay. He's great. I trust him implicitly. And after talking with Joe, he knows exactly what he's doing. Just wanna get the Is dotted, Ts crossed, all that stuff.
And I just have one other question. What do you think about that ban stand? Didn't that come out beautiful?
Yeah, it looked good.
That really came out...
Did a great job.
As soon as I, as soon as we, I got the roofing guy coming, hopefully this week, and then Brent can do the lot in the front, and it's all done. Came out really, really nice. I mean, I, I was away last week and I came back and saw it, and I went, wow. Ain't better than I imagined.
It shocked me.
Yeah.
At first, I said, oh my God, it's destroying the, the, the town hall.
No.
But now...
It's offset.
It looks great.
Once it's roofed, you know, the trim, and it's all true, the trim really came out. I did a good job.
We're gonna have to be careful. You know what's gonna happen? I know a certain Dave that's gonna go out there and stand in there and start playing something.
Playing guitar or something? Or the bass stand?
In your spare time, we're gonna get out there and start playing.
White, plastic, tramp.
Yeah, that'll last forever. I, I, I know, I know Nancy's looking at that and say, boy, that'd be nice at the senior center, one of those.
Yeah, well, they ain't building anymore, I can tell you that.
No, we need some more parking.
Yes.
That was, that was interesting. Ten thousand people in Rutland and two hundred parking spaces.
Well, there is, yeah, there is.
There's a ton of it. My building, no, behind a library over here.
Tell you, I don't know what was going on with the ball field when I came up here.
I almost got hit by a Mac, by, by a, uh, a Dodge 2500 because I was trying to stay as close to the cars parked, and he had, it must've been vehicles over there. He came over the center line. And I'm like, I really don't wanna deal with map free again. I've had enough of this insurance company. And then I just stopped, and then he went back going...
Must've been some awful big game.
They don't make a pass around behind the ball field.
They, and the, the dirt's dug up, Julian, and it looks like he could do it.
Well, yeah. I used to go down the miles.
Yeah, I mean, literally, get rid of the...
There was a wet lamp, but to me, for current law, I think it's man-made. And we oughta take a harder look at it to maybe...
I mean, it's a safety issue right now.
Whole runs.
Wait, wait to, wait to Del Luca or to whatever that restaurant with the liquor license. What is it?
Dolce Vita.
Dolce Vita gets in there. Nothing like, uh, open container walking class fifty-six.
But, you know, that's one thing, before Jimmy got done over here, I was hoping that he would increase the easement that comes by his place over there for the seniors to come over to the Rutland marketplace would've been ideal.
Oh, for walking?
Yeah. 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 Gotta have things to do. There's too many things that, uh, need to be done.
Oh, with two hundred spaces, you just don't...
I am gonna bring that up. I think that the money that we're gonna get from Mr. Blair for Bear Hill Two, each house is two hundred and fifty bucks or so.
I agree.
Thank God, Adam.
How you guys got me to agree to that?
Anyhow, I think something like that ought to be put towards, uh, the town center, uh...
You know, gift it back so I can pay for that ban stand. Well, thanks, you guys. Good talk. Good to see you again.
Take care.
All right.
Okay.
Oh, we gotta appoint the gentleman.
Yes. Master Plan Steering Committee, uh, appointing, uh...
So, as the board remembers, Mitch Gill was a full member. He's been on for a year and a half. He had other commitments. We do appreciate his time. Uh, he initially discussed going off the board when the two new members came on. Thankfully, the board appointed two new members recently. He, he changed his mind. He would be agreeable to be served, to serve as an alternate. I think the Master Plan Steering Committee agrees with that as well. I think that they endorse that, um, concept. So the idea here would be to appoint Mitch Gill as an alternate member to the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Yeah, that's what I recommended. I didn't wanna lose him because he's a, he's got a lot of great opinions.
So we accept a motion.
Motion to appoint Mitch Gill as an alternate member to the Master Steering Committee. Second.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Planning Board Bylaw Subcommittee update.
Bylaw Subcommittee has a proposal. I would like to just go through this quickly tonight. Um, this is, um, somewhat of a draft. It's more of an outline, but, uh, what could happen? Do you want one?
Yeah, if you have it.
You wanna come get it? Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, um, for example, the purpose would be, uh, to provide multiple opportunities for business of various sizes to locate in Rutland, and that, any of this can be certainly rewritten. Uh, definitions would come later. The main part of it is that I'm proposing that there be three different, uh, sections to the law. The first one would be by right, and those would be the, anything that had limited impact on the neighborhood or, or the surrounding location. For example, somebody who is working for home, a professional with limited clientele, for example, a lawyer. For some reason, I wrote a psychic. I'm not sure why I did that. Um, a therapist such as myself. Um, and you could say, you know, condition could be that they would have two parking spaces, a limit. Uh, the second one would be businesses that require a special permit that have more impact on the neighborhood. And that would be, I think, a lot of our section two. I didn't go back and look at that. And then the third would be the large parcels of land, and it would be George's, uh, bylaw. So, I apologize for my writing and spelling. I don't wanna hear about any spelling corrections.
The only thing Marilyn was gonna ask on number one by right,
Yep.
should we put in site plan review just to take a look at it, even though...
Oh, you know, I wouldn't say so much site plan review is, uh, what I was thinking about was more of an A and R type of a process. Site plan, I mean, something not as complicated as...
Uh, isn't, uh... Regular home occupation, uh, codified in state law?
No, what's codified, no. The municipalities can grant a special permit or allow home occupations at the concept, but there's not, it's not a zoning act. There's not a zoning act provision that specifically pertains to home occupations. But the zoning does allow for the towns to have their variations on home occupation bylaws. So it's really a creature of given town or city.
I, I wouldn't mind this just to the board of, of, if it not site plan review, have something similar to what we do with the ag bylaw, where you've gotta come in with a drawing, you know, a detailed drawing of what you're gonna do, the property.
That's site plan review.
Okay. Oops.
Well...
I just was trying to not make it as...
Yeah, it's something that was not, not as formalist.
Yeah.
I mean, then you're getting into, uh... Now, what I would like to also say, now, this is what my mind has been going on, and it's based on the material that Dave gave us. And what I would like you to do, we have, I don't have, uh, number three of yours, which I think was like twenty-four pages or something. But anyway, this is the one I'd like to have you, this is the first one in the packet, zoning for home occupations. I'd like to have you read that and think about the questions that it proposes and the suggestions that, that are, that are in this particular one. Also, and the one that's, uh, the second that we, we got, what I did is I looked at the, uh, memo, the email that the referent, that you gave him to us, and I went back and, uh... But this is, uh, number, don't to coin with that. This is home occupations. It's from Vermont. It's very, very restrictive, but it does have an interesting chart. They do actually, uh, they have home occupations and home industry standards, but they're, they're interesting, and this is somewhat what I was thinking. I'm not proposing this, and I probably shouldn't have used that word, but so much of the, what I'm proposing is the format of the three different, different, uh, subtypes.
I guess I gotta ask, is the motorcycle guy taken care of? Is that...
Well, he's not, he, he's in that business zone, so I'm not sure that the home occupations would apply to him anyway.
Okay.
No, there's nothing to do with that.
No, no, I'm just, I, I know we had three of them.
Yeah.
And I wanna see that, the, the first one was the easiest one, was the motorcycle. Is he good? Okay. I, I haven't, I'm sorry I haven't been at the meeting, so I wanted, I wanted to see that box checked, and now we're on to the second one, which was the home occupation that George had, had put together.
Yeah, and that was...
And that's what you're working on right now?
Yeah, that's, that's really more in the third.
Excellent.
I mean, this is just an outline of what it could look like.
Okay.
You know, and I need to, uh, I myself have to go back and read some more stuff. This is, uh, uh, Massachusetts land use, and then most of the references are in the sixties, but I just wanted, it had a kind of an interesting example of, um, incidental, on the meaning of incidental. And it says, uh, "When, however, the business obtains the magnitude as to no longer be included, it is no longer be incidental. They lose their status as an accessory use." In other words, the tail cannot wag the dog, and the work cannot be conducted in such a fashion that, uh, the dog is wagging the tails.
And that is George's argument for Mr. Hifes, for Mr. Rossetti, is it was beyond incidental, because you had, uh, construction equipment there. You know, kinds... That was his argument, and then when he went to put his bylaw together, he went a hundred and eighty degrees the other way.
Yeah. Which is, I mean, and there, there's some justification for that, because the first one was based on the existing law. So, have some homework. Have a little bit of thinking to do about, uh, the three categories. I think everybody's got their paper. Bonnie's got, I included one for Bonnie in the plans. Julian will give her. Any other questions, comments?
The only other thing is, we have to go ahead for about twelve LPA hours from...
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, you bet. Just repeat, I didn't, I catch what you said.
We have to go ahead for twelve LPA hours from CMRPC.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
And, uh, oh, God. Who did she say is gonna be working it? Did she copy you at that? I don't know, no. And, okay, it's two people we know.
Dominique?
Dominique.
Not Dominique.
Gabe.
Gabe Trevor. And some other female.
Was it the one that was on the meeting that had to bolt out in the last?
No.
Wasn't her?
I, yeah.
Not Trish. Trish, that's one of them.
Well, not Trish, no. There was a younger lady that was on the last, uh, master plan that couldn't stay because Dominique was stuck on the mass trains.
I don't think it was her. If somebody can mention the name, I'll remember it, but I don't know.
I don't know. We have a work with a whole lot of other staff.
Yeah.
So I can't really suggest that. So there isn't...
It sounded familiar to me.
Well, if my, if we're that...
I'll forward it to you, yeah. So...
Another, um, issue I think that, that we should address, or we at least need to think about in that, is what happens when a business, uh, say is in one category, like it's a, a category one, which is a smaller, you know, home office kind of deal, and if it, the business outgrows the category that it's in, what do we, what do we do about it, whether or not we even want to...
Is that good and that growing for current law in Liberty Hall? Keep running.
Anyway.
That'd a heck of a town.
That, that, that's kind of a toughie, because...
I almost put in there something that, uh, you know, maybe they come back every three years, and if it's gotta be updated, let the building inspector tell us that, because he's the enforcement officer, correct?
Yeah, he's the enforcement officer, but, like I say, I'm just, uh, I, I'm looking at it more from what happens when a business goes beyond home occupation.
You want to kick them out and let them go to Holden and then grow a big business for crying out loud and kick yourself in the butt later?
And who determines it, and what kind of?
Or you turn around and say, hey, listen, the town of Rutland has some property. We'd be more than happy to lease it to you for a certain number of years.
We have our industrial park over by Ridge Road. Sorry.
Anyway, just food for thought, as my grandmother would say.
And is a meeting next Tuesday?
Yes.
Well, that's too bad.
Why?
Ad Commission.
I thought you said that I could have the room.
You can have the room. You have the room. We don't need the room. If we have to have it outdoors, we'll have it outdoors. It's not.
It was nothing if the wood studio would be available, but you can say you'd make a break.
That's a good question, I know, and before we dismiss, is the July 15th no more Zoom stuff still an actual fact?
As of last night, it hadn't.
Been re-upped.
As I understand.
The state hasn't redone it.
Right, not yet. As I understand, at the House, there's a House bill that has it. There's a Senate bill that has it. They want to get it done before the session ends in July 31st. So, I believe this has to be, I've gone through conference committees to resolve some of the outstanding items. Is that close on this?
Uh, House has passed, Senate's passed. It's on the governor's desk, and I just haven't gotten confirmation that it's been signed.
Oh, God.
Now, the House, 2023, December?
2023.
So, it's even further than I thought it was.
But, that's the good news. There is another, uh, bill before the House to require remote public participation for every meeting of every private body.
Cut the crap.
I don't think it's gonna pass. My guess is it's gonna kill it in committee, but it hasn't been killed yet.
Wow.
You've gotta be kidding me.
That's money we don't have?
Yeah.
Another library.
Yeah, table, piece of problem, you know, piece of trouble.
Oh, yeah, you guys get funds from Charter, right? They just give you cash, right?
Yeah, we spend the one we get.
That's it, I just wanted to find out about that, because I knew.
So, it's likely to pass?
Yeah, I just don't know if the governor will sign before the 15th. I expect so, but.
The Zoom meetings.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know it passed the House and the Senate, so Charlie's just gotta put the John Hancock on, and it's law.
Correct.
Extended law, I should say.
So, just to go back to, you don't know?
Yes, I've got, thank you.
You don't have to leave.
Someone needs to go, go and hear your work.
The concept of the three, you know, those three classifications is what I would really like to have you think about, as well as, you know, what could go away with that. Because if you don't like that, I'll have to go start thinking again.
Well, how do you do it? I mean.
I, I'm.
If you read it, I basically came out of those, your homework assignments, the information about that, it's in bits and pieces in those two things, but the other thing that was kind of interesting is I talked to my kids, I mean, stepkids, you know, in the second generation down, there's six of them. Yeah, one of them works at a laboratory in biotech, so he really has to go work. The other five are involved in working at home for major, you know, consa corporations, including DCR, one of my kids works. There's a summer job with DCR, would be in charge of their summer programs. Staples, Boston University Law School, Horizon, I think there was another one. So, times are changing.
Yeah, anyways, I suppose, there's a lot of businesses that could be substantial, but the work is all done inside. There's nothing external.
I don't have a problem with the telecommuting and the business. It's just, when you're growing a business that includes equipment in residential, that's where my foot gets a little bit out of whack. If, if you're doing a hairdresser, if you're doing a dentist.
Then you would be in the second category.
Yeah, yeah. You're right, Marilyn, I'd be in the second category. I just.
This would be.
So, would you?
Number one, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Number, the first category, number one, would be, like, I know a therapist who has clients, she sees clients in her home. She sees one at a time. They're staggered, so there's only one extra car in her house. That would be a number one. The hairdresser would be a number two. And then number three would be the really large.
And I'm fine with the number two category. That, that was the only thing with our home occupation, major home occupation, we really didn't have sort of all encompassing.
Why don't we increase our lot size?
It didn't address the character.
Yeah.
Of business, well, you know.
I think where you're going, Marilyn, helps that.
You can have, you can have, probably six or eight people coming, coming to a residence, but can you have five dump trucks?
Therefore, if we enlarge the lot size for the town of Rutland, what is left?
That's where, if you got an estate lot.
And then, and then somebody, well, that's how you gotta start thinking. If you want people to come in and have these dump trucks.
You need an estate lot or bigger.
Or bigger.
And then you're into the third category.
Yeah.
Which I haven't really defined among, had yet, but that would.
And before long, I'm gonna tell you right now, Boston's gonna be telling us, oh, you can't have an acre and a half lot. You can't have one acre lot. No, you're only gonna have 10,000 square foot lots.
Yeah, okay.
And to me, for crying out loud, you guys better get on the stick and step, thinking about it, because it's gonna be here sooner than you know.
Yeah, I have a feeling Rutland will be in a close to built-out state by the time that happens.
I don't, I think it's gonna be quicker than that.
You think?
Yes.
The state?
And I'm very nervous, and I'm bringing it up to the Ad Commission again, for crying out loud, that I, it really scares me about the APR properties.
Oh, yeah, that's basically lifetime lock-ins.
Supposed to be. And they're disappearing.
You mean disappearing, they're changing the lifetime lock-in?
Oh, yeah. Wait a minute, no, we're gonna have a school there now. Oh, we're gonna do something else over here. Oh.
Really?
Some of the land is disappearing, so be careful.
Wow.
You think it's, you think it's all locked in.
Yeah, because my sister's got an APR. She worked with the state on 60 acres over in Holden. That used to be farmlands, now woods, and didn't want any, any houses built on it. Nice, nice woods.
And that's why they have the right of first refusal when you leave, so you gotta be careful.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ethan to adjourn.